Welcome to the Salem Township Planning Commission. May 17th, 2021. The meeting is called to order at 7:30. If you'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, "One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for all."
Okay. Now. I have not. Yes, please.
It's down here.
Okay, good, because you're gonna need that. Keep that? Because we need someone to be secretary.
Oh, oh.
Just for the night, huh?
You do not want my.
We already voted for you.
Oh, that's okay.
No, no, so all you have to do is call for the vote.
Yeah.
But, so if you have a question.
Hey, Rob, you coming to the meeting here tonight? Are you attending at home? Yeah, I know.
Yes, we're only upstairs, let's go.
Okay, I gotta move. We'll see you today. Bye.
Okay, thank you.
This is, this is a first.
I know.
You know, like.
You will be awesome. Okay. Mark, can you please call the attendance?
With Lily calling the attendance?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is it just right?
18 years that it's sitting up here.
I know, it's your turn. It's your turn.
So for consistency. Okay.
We're gonna sign it, she, he's doing it.
I haven't signed it, she's.
They passed, we gotta sign it.
He's gonna need it for the rest of the meeting.
Let's, let's click it.
It's the overhead speaker, it just has a ghost in the machine. Works its way out.
Thank you. We owe you one.
Okay, so this is calling attendance?
Yes, please.
Pam Merlow.
Here.
Daniel Vigari.
Here.
TJ McLaughlin.
Here.
Daryl Lewandowski.
Here.
And yourself, we're kind of here. Robert Rizzo, I believe, on his way.
On his way. Excellent. Okay, thank you. Okay. It sometimes helps, right? Genius. Okay. Election of Officers. We need a secretary.
I'm making motion to do.
Do that with them not being there?
Yeah.
We need us to take.
Yeah, we have to do a little bit, something, yeah.
Okay.
Where's, where's the approval? Don't we do the approval of the agenda before that? Should we approve before we do that?
Sure, you can actually postpone, you can move the agenda earlier.
Okay. So approval of the agenda. I recommend we postpone the election of officers. For secret, uh, did we do all this, everything except secretary? So the election of the secretary until the next meeting.
Or you could just push it down to the bottom of this one.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. After, hold this a second?
Yep.
Yes.
Number C.
Okay. I recommend we move the election of the secretary position to 9C.
Yeah.
Or would it be number 10? Will we be at number 10? That would be something separate.
9.1.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Move after 9, before 10.
Nine and a half.
Well, if you move it down, the other numbers will just go up.
Okay, we've got two 10s in there anyhow, so.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay. I'll. Yeah, Daryl.
Okay.
Daryl seconded. That's okay. Because I take all these too, so it's.
Oh, now you.
That's all right, just do your thing.
Safety net.
I'm backup.
So roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of moving to after the 10, the election of officers, currently number four on the agenda? Pam Merlow.
And, yes, an approval of the agenda, right?
And an approval of the agenda as such.
So after 10.
After 10.
Yeah, because we're all here.
You can just call.
Yeah.
Okay. Just have a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda and moving the election of the secretary position down to after number 10? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Sorry, we'll get this together here in a second. We haven't been in person without mask for all purpose. Okay. Okay. Public comment. Do we have?
Linda.
Yes, and public comment is limited to about three, about three minutes. Linda.
I already thanked Pam today, but I wanted to thank the Planning Commission. The library's drive-up window is open and today we began using it. So thank you again, guys, for helping us with that.
Yay, that was fast. Good deal. Chairperson comment. Welcome, everyone, welcome back. It's good to see you. Thank you for your patience as we pull it all together here. Number nine, and number eight, new business items, none. Old business items, preliminary site plan, Edith's Gas &amp; Go File 17-03. Okay, so. Edith Market. I'm sure everyone has read it. This is a preliminary site plan.
I would like to say a few words before we start the discussion about it.
Okay, I'm gonna have Paul just give a very brief, very brief overview, just to kind of bring first people up to speed.
Okay. So you have in front of you two reviews, one from planning and one from engineering. This, as you indicated, is Edith's Market preliminary site plan review. And you have seen this a number of times before you. The applicant has revised this quite a number of times and now working with a different engineer than I think you've seen before. These plans are in the best shape that we've seen them now. So it's kind of gone in some directions and gone back now. So this is an existing site. They are proposing to reinstall the gas pumps under the canopies. This is an existing non-conforming site in that it doesn't meet all the setback requirements, et cetera. But because this is an existing site, we're looking at it as legal non-conformity on the site. Currently, there is a convenience store, a two-story apartment building, and what is now being indicated as a 12,000 square foot vacant space on the end. So they're improving the site with curbs and gutters along roadway, so where you currently have unobstructed access to the site. They have, on the plan, they're proposing two dedicated access points, one on North Territorial and one on Pontiac Trail. So that is a very welcome cleanup of that, of that area for circulation purposes. As you may be aware, the Road Commission is proposing to put a roundabout in that intersection. So we have seen some, some commentary from the Road Commission about the access points. They have not provided an approval letter or a permit at this point. But I did see a sketch drawing from the Road Commission showing that the configuration of what they're showing on their plans does not necessarily conflict with with what they're proposing for improvements for the intersection. So ultimately, we're gonna wanna see an approval letter with the final site plan, that the geometry and everything that they're proposing is acceptable because the Road Commission has jurisdiction over those curb cuts. In addition, they're proposing a green space in that area, separating the site from the road with landscaping. It has to remain low for, for corner vision purposes, but that will also be a very nice cleanup. We'll make, put a brighter face on the, on the front of that site. So they're proposing new, to put up new canopies over the pump islands. The pump islands are remaining in the existing spaces where they have historically been. With the non-conforming issues, the commission does have to make some determinations that the proposal will do at least three of the list of improvements to the site. I've just mentioned some of those improvements, but it's up to you to make that ultimate determination. There are a number of items that we wanna see on the final site plan that are required on the final site plan, like a detailed landscaping plan and the lighting plan. They have provided building elevations in the site plan. I would suggest that you all look at those and make any comments that you think are appropriate. They're proposing 20, well, the, the plan shows 20 parking spaces, the calculations show 21. Again, this is an existing site, so it's really very tight. So they've really worked to get these parking spaces in areas where people won't be backing out of them and conflicting with the potential on-site traffic circulation. As I noted in my report, there is, they are showing space on either end of each of the proposed canopies and pump islands for a single car to wait if all, if all the pumps are filled. And they're showing 11-foot wide drive area on the outside where people would be parked at the pumps for cars to go, go past, to bypass the pump area. So this would really kind of dedicate or dictate one-way traffic. With only 11-foot drive aisle, somebody's not gonna be able to go both ways on either side of the pump. We do have some concerns about that circulation issue and we ask you to, to discuss that. On crowded days, that site could become very tight. But again, this is an existing site, so I think they're doing the best they can with what they're working with. They are showing a loading area for the tanker truck that would fill up the gas, get underground gas tank storage. That truck does have to back through some parking spaces they're shown in order to navigate the site to get out. We suggest that this may be okay. Every time we have this discussion with gas station developers, the indication is that the trucks that come to refuel the, or refill the fuel storage tanks come at off-hours. Otherwise, they're gonna have a real tough time, I think, navigating that site with cars on the site. So they do show that truck backing into parking spaces and then navigating along the outside edge of the canopies. And would require going through a car, one, one of the cars that would be at the northernmost pump to exit the site if there's a car there. So, so there's some potential conflicts there. Again, it's a very tight site, but they are showing all the items that we wanted to see here. Like I said, landscaping and lighting are final site plan issues. There's no indication of any new signs on, on plan. There's a dumpster enclosure that's accessed behind the existing gate there. And we're suggesting that the walkway around the building be somehow designated, either with striping or a different pavement material. They do show bollards at, at the doors to, to the entrance to the various buildings there. But in order to dedicate that as a space where people would be walking from their cars to the building, we're suggesting that that, because you can't raise the sidewalk there because of the existing grade. You wouldn't be able to make a raised sidewalk, which is typically what you do to protect pedestrians walking on the site. So we would suggest that they either make that out of concrete if the rest of the site is asphalt, or at least do some striping there. We do feel like all these items can be addressed on, on the final site plan. But like I said, this is the best that we've seen this in the number of reviews that we've done. We also have a report from the township engineer. And they are, you know, there's a couple of cleanup items, like I think I heard somebody mention the stop sign that's really just, you know, showing that that's not gonna be in the curb. Perhaps the biggest issue that comes out of the engineering review is their indication that there's a concern about the conflict between where stormwater ponds on the site. You know, they're, they're suggesting that they're not creating any new impervious surface. So therefore, they would not be required to follow under the new Washtenaw County Drain Water Resources Commissioner's Office requirements. But they do indicate that where the water naturally goes is within the influence of the septic fields and could potentially cause issues with that if that system fails. Beyond that, I don't believe they're, well, and they are still asking for the applicant to quantify the pavement surfaces, what's existing and what's being proposed. So I think that sums it up, unless you have any questions for me about my report or the engineering report.
Nope, I think we're good.
I, I withdraw my request to talk because he had enough info.
Okay, well, we may have questions for you anyhow. Get another chair. Okay, thank you. Okay. I think what we're gonna do is what, kind of like what we were through last month? We went through quite a bit of information pretty quickly. And so I think what we have done is, I like to go through section at a time. And I'll, I'll, I'll start with my questions and then somebody else, you know, just do one at a time if you need to add or have a question. So we can knock each section off and make a decision one way or another and go through our, our site, so. I don't, I did not have anything on this, in the, the site description or anything like that. Did anybody have that, anything? It's just a, it's just an explanation of what we're doing and why. Should be pretty simple. The only place that I saw where we got to any questions were on page three when it, there were some encroachment being the canopies into the front yard setback. The existing canopies are, are larger. But I think. The new ones, I'm sorry. The new ones are going, the new ones are gonna be larger, which would, would make sense. There hasn't been a gas station there in quite a while. And with, what we need to keep in mind is, Paul said, there is, it's a tight, it's small space. It's not probably gonna meet every single new code, because codes are constantly getting bigger and, and more and more and more. But in Salem, we don't want something giant, I don't think. We wanna keep things scaled properly and appropriately to fit our community. So that's something to take into consideration, just because it doesn't meet something, is, is it appropriate? Is it safe? Things of that nature. So when we get to the, the first item to be addressed, we need to evaluate the site plan improvements to verify that they address three or more criteria in 65.09.3. I went through there. There's, there's definitely three of those in regards to improvement. It says the the proposed site improvements shall include at least three of the following. And when I looked at them, there's landscape improvements, there's gonna be exterior lighting improvements, cleanup or restoration. I don't know if, if that would apply, but vehicular access and circulation improvements. Off-street parking interloading. So I was able to see a few, but does anybody else have any questions in that first section? Or concerns or anything that needs to be discussed? It is just a preliminary, so.
I have nothing, everything I had questions on, they've been answered already. Thank you.
Okay. So if no one else has anything, we'll just move on to the next section. Page five, items to be addressed, provide canically lighting fixtures, details for new canopy, that's on the final site plan. Planning Commission must determine if the architectural design is compatible with the principal building. It's an existing building. Does anyone have any questions in regards to what they're gonna do with the existing building and how they're gonna update the facade? It's, we're getting a new roundabout in there. It's gonna be kind of a gateway to our community. Review some improvements in that area? Would you all, are there? Are there any proposed improvements? But for.
I didn't, there was nothing on here.
Right. So I know that, that's a, that's a big question or concern, being that that area is gonna be new and improved and it gets a lot of traffic, which would be good. But as it is now, what do you plan on doing with the building or, or the facade out there?
We're gonna remodel the inside and the outside. And the physical structure are gonna be the same. We're gonna give the building a very clean and a new face on the outside. We're gonna remodel the inside. We're gonna have a new ceiling, a new floor, and we're gonna put a new equipment on the store too. So it's gonna look like a brand-new.
What are you gonna do with the outside to it? How, how are you gonna remodel it? What's, what do you have in your plans?
We're gonna put side ends and we're gonna power wash the brick and we're gonna give it paint jobs. We're gonna change the windows on the buildings, the frames. It's, the whole building gonna look like a brand-new. We're gonna put the new doors, the new windows, all that gonna, it's gonna look totally different. And if you don't know the building before, you think it's a new building. That's because we believe and make, I've been in Salem for seven years. And I love the community. I treated my customers as friends and family, not as customers. We did contributed to the community. I was a stabilizing force in that corner. I kept it from growing wild. And we built a, a big name for us. It's a name of respect and love and help. We supported every movement in the area. We supported our churches, our schools for yearbooks, our community activities. Everybody who came to us, we never turned anybody down. We always were a helping hand to anybody who needs help. So we as business people and as a family and residents of the area, we would like to give Salem a beautiful face. And that's our desire and we will never let you down.
Perfect.
And I mean it.
Probably gonna wanna make sure that we have, that goes on like the plan, right? So we wanna make sure that that, you know, those things that you included are, it's probably in a description of the things you're gonna do because that's what people are gonna wanna, wanna hear and see. So we wanna make sure that that's on your plan. Very good.
We're not requiring those three walk-through virtual tours.
No.
No.
It hasn't become our own site plan.
And so you'll, you'll provide the, whatever in, in this report you'll certainly want in order to get to the next step because there's a lot of open-ended things, but it's fine because this is a preliminary.
Absolutely.
But that face is what we were kind of looking for, because we were wondering what your expectations were.
That's what we are planning, yes.
Okay, very good. Sounds excellent. Okay. Page six. Calculations must be updated. This is parking, this is parking and loading. Planning Commission must determine if the apparent proposed loading area is acceptable. I believe they need to provide more calculations and details on their plans. That's my understanding, that according to Paul, that once we get those in there.
So there's some standards, but the issue would be there's no, if, if, if a car is parked to be fueled, that two cars can't pass on the other side. Is that what your thing was? So you're jumping into the circulation discussion a little bit, but as far as the parking, they have the correct calculations, just the, the numbers shown on the site.
Okay.
It's off. Now, I don't know that they have the ability to squeeze one more space in there. I think they're showing the calculation for 21 spaces and they're actually have 20 on the drawing. Oftentimes, especially for like the convenience store, folks are gonna leave their car sitting at the pump to go in. So I wouldn't be too worried about, you know, that one space. The bigger question is about the area for the truck that's gonna be fueling the underground tanks. And when that backs out, it has to back over a parking space. So if there's a car there, that truck's gonna be stuck there until the car moves. And then when it leaves the site, it wraps around in front of the canopies, between the road and the canopy. And when it comes out, it has to take kind of an arcing turn to get out of that driveway. And it would clip a car that was sitting at the, at the pump fueling if there was one there. So those are just, those are kind of congestion backup issues that I suspect will definitely happen if it's approved this way.
Just to clarify, there's one entrance and then the other is the exit?
For the truck, yeah.
Oh, not for regular fueling traffic?
No. They have not indicated any single direction traffic on the site. I, I think it may be appropriate to say that it's one way on one side of the pumps and one way on the other, but, you know, frankly, you know, cars have gas tanks on, on different sides and, you know, I don't know how you. but frankly, you know, cars have gas tanks on different sides and, you know, I don't know how you can help.
Won't the roundabout dictate, as you're coming from Pontiac Trail, you'll go in at that point there? But you would not be, I can't see you coming back to that where you came in at. To get back into the roundabout, you'll go out territorial and pick up the roundabout on the other side.
I think the way it's shown, you could go in or out either side. And then, you know, depending on which direction you're going, if you're trying to continue going south on Pontiac Trail, for example, you'd want to go back to the Pontiac Trail exit so you can go around the roundabout to keep going straight.
How inevitable is this traffic circle?
I think.
Next year, next year.
So.
Definitely.
I hate to see anybody wasting time, effort, money, materials. Do you think we should be considering looking at this with what it would be final with a roundabout?
So I have had communications with the road commission and they have superimposed the EDIS plan on top of their roundabout plan and the configurations look like it will work.
They told me that directly. They said there will be no conflict between our side and their plan. They told me as a matter of fact that it's going to complement each other.
From what I see from this drawing, it looks like it's going to work. In fact, it's going to work better with the roundabout in there because it gives that more space.
Gives more structure to traffic.
I mean, it's, yeah, they may be a few months off, but still two plans converging into one. I think this should reflect the roundabout, quite honestly.
Yeah, but this is just a preliminary.
Yeah, okay.
So they're going to have a, they're going to have a whole list of things once that final comes in. Because, yeah, I asked about that to make sure that the road commission was even consulted on this before we, before it even got on this agenda. Because if they didn't know and there wasn't a plan and it wasn't fit, there wouldn't be any point in them being here.
They've been in talk with us and they, as a matter of fact, they visited me at the store three, four different times. And that's what they informed me anyway.
We'll just need it in writing before your, for your next plan comes. Okay. So on page six, there were some things that Paul reviewed. The sidewalk can't be raised. Correspondence from the road commission. Circulation. And I think the question gets to if the circulation is appropriate when we talk about the truck. It sounds like it might be tight, but it is doable.
Well, generally, those trucks load at night anyway. Nobody has to be there anymore. They have their own metric gauges and things, so the trucks usually load when there's no one there.
We used to have gas before inhalating. And they used to come in and fill up the tanks during the night.
I'm kind of surprised to hear that. I'm just going to say, because every time I go to that gas station on Seven Mile Vector, there's always a truck. What's that?
They do a load of gas a day.
They get a lot of people in there?
Right, so it depends. I wish Mike would get that.
Okay.
So he says once a week, you would be lucky.
Yes. Does anybody have any questions with the circulation part?
No.
No? Okay, so.
I have a question with parking.
Oh, parking, okay.
Yep. It seems like a lot of parking spaces.
It does.
You know, I mean, I go to other gas stations, they have like three. So how is the calculation? Is that based on like the apartment and then the vacant building and plans for the vacant building?
So it's a combination of the floor area, the vacant building, the apartment, the convenience store, and then there's also a requirement for the gas station. But like I said, I feel like the requirements for the gas pumps are, you know, as long as you have the stacking spaces there, because people aren't going to be parking to get gas, they're going to be at the pump. So if you guys saw a fit to allow for a reduction, I think that that would be fine. The way they have them set, they're off to the side, I think it's okay. But like I said, the twenty, twenty versus twenty-one, I think is not an issue.
That's a lot.
I'd already seen, yeah, it seemed like a lot of spaces to require.
So if we were to do a reduction, would it help with the circulation at all?
I mean, they could possibly strengthen that area that's in that corner where the truck backs over the parking space to ensure that it wouldn't ever be parked down.
So it's still a lot, but it's just not parking?
Yep.
That might be something to consider.
Probably discourage that parking, let's see, would be the east corner. Just someone backing out of that and someone turning into this at the same time?
East corner, yeah.
This, this right here, the shaded area that we're discussing?
Yes.
Just someone backing out of that, someone turning in at the same time could, you know.
We'll leave that up to you.
Yeah.
But it sounds like that it would, might be helpful to you to give more, more space in there.
I think we should be able to, or what do you think?
So, just something to think about. We're not, we're not here to design your plans.
There are four stacking spaces right now shown. And if, I mean, if you would allow those to cover that one space that you're talking about, it wouldn't need to be any reduction in any of the parking spaces.
I'm thus. Okay. Landscape. Provide a lighting plan. Because we'll need new signs that are in compliance with the signs ordinance.
If they're proposing new signs.
If they're proposing new signs, well.
If they keep, if they keep the existing signs, then those would be, remain as legal market ordinance. I believe they have a ground sign on the north end of the site, or kind of full, full amount of sign. Signs on the building. But I suspect that you're keeping those, correct?
Okay. All right. I don't have any questions, any other additional questions?
Could you go?
TJ?
The parking lot area right now is permeable, right? And on the plane, is that going to be asphalt?
Asphalt.
So how does that relate to permeable surface that we're talking about with the county improving?
So their contention is that it's already paved. So I don't, I mean, that's, that's something that the engineers have been asking for is a quantification of what the difference between pavement and permeable surface will be.
Okay, so you're basically saying that's really pretty much impermeable right now?
Yeah.
The surface with, like, road mill or something?
Yes.
Okay.
And the new pavement covers the existing pavement almost exactly.
So if you, if you can quantify that for the engineers on the next go-round.
I was telling Bart, we're going to go through the STANTEC ones.
I was jumping again, sorry.
Nope, that's okay. You're on top of things. Mr. Secretary? Okay, so we're going to go through the STANTEC report because I think there's some things in here. We just want to make sure we discuss and the planning commission's okay with them. You know, locations of stop signs. I didn't have, that's all, this whole list of things will need to be addressed. I had one concern, and that was on page three, number ten. And that's exactly what Barton had brought up. It says, "The information provided on the plans for the existing well and septic final disposal fields indicate they don't meet the current minimum isolation distances." "The final disposal field is too close to both the existing well and the small pond behind the existing store building." And the part that I have questions about is the next line that says, "Not meeting isolation distances is a potential public health hazard should the existing septic field fail." And there's not a designated reserved septic field area indicated on site. These are existing conditions, and it says, "The township will need to decide if they can and should be grandfathered and allow the systems to continue under their current situation." I don't think that that is the, I don't, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not, I'm not an expert on this, but I don't think it's the planning's position, the planning commission's role to certify a septic field earth or something like that is, and say, oh, it's okay, but if it goes wrong, it's a public health hazard. Well, one of our, one of our, our main role is public health and safety. So I have concerns about that, but I do understand your current situation. So I think we, the planning commission, needs more guidance on whether or not this is appropriate. And not just say, "It's a potential public health hazard if it fails, you decide." I don't think, that doesn't quite make sense to me.
So the Washtenaw County Department of Environmental Health has jurisdiction over wells and septic fields. So you could certainly ask for a review and a sign-off from, from the township's sanitarian if that would make you feel more comfortable, because they're the ones who can evaluate something like that and determine if it's safe.
I think that should be someone else's role to determine if it's safe, not us. We just evaluate the plans.
I agree. I agree. We're not in that position.
Well, right now, right now.
That's been there for umpteen years.
I do agree with the conversation, but let me ask a couple of questions here. What they're proposing here, is that dictated by the county as a more stringent, a higher usage of the septic field? A higher, you know, flow rate of everything going in and out? Or is it considered safe? And they're not adding a bathroom, they're not adding an apartment, foot traffic?
Well, not bad than having plumbing.
Are they saying that because of four more pumps, there could be, could there be more foot traffic? More bathroom usage or whatever? That would dictate the field getting bigger? If no, and it's same usage and they're grandfathering in for the size, then it just becomes the replacement field, right? Or if this field fails. I think what we could do as a planning commission is put on this plan that I believe there's like tests you can do just inside the holding tanks to see if there's, what the health of bacteria and, you know, basically an inspection of the field. Is it, is it still very functional or is bacteria still doing okay? And we could put that on there. We could do something to help mitigate it, but I would think something to approve it.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I don't want to say it doesn't work, it's not good enough. And if, and if it's, if it's grandfathered and it's not even required for to do whatever, then I think that the approving body should say, no, they, these, they meet the requirements and they're good, they're good to go. They meet the approval. That's what I'm thinking it should be.
Because the building isn't any bigger, so there is.
Right, so it should be fine.
You're going to have more people.
Yeah, but nobody, nobody uses gas station bathrooms that much, do they?
Oh, yeah, they do.
We do not.
I see him running. But it's not, I don't think it's, the volume is down.
Well, let's not, let's not get too far in the weeds, guys. This is not our role to discuss.
When you size a septic, you don't necessarily size it by the number of people. You size it by the number of bathrooms. I know that's crazy. So you could sit there and say, a building that has two bathrooms that are used fifty percent duty cycle has to have a bigger septic field than one bathroom that's used a hundred percent.
But that's, that's what we're saying. It's not our role to determine.
I don't believe they're adding bathrooms, so.
Let's, let's move, let's move forward. I think, I, you know, it sounds like everything should be fine because you all meet, it meets the criteria and everything. But I would still like to request that the Washtenaw County Environmental Health sign off and say, because it has been such a long period of time and you are looking for, you know, to make sure everything is good. They say, yeah, it's good to go.
That's, everything staying the same. We are not adding nothing. We, all, every, anything we're going to add is side ends, paint, the stuff. Physically, the buildings stay in the same. The size of the parking lot, basically, is the same. Everything is the same.
And I understand that, but in this engineer's report, they're telling us that, that if it fails, it's a public health hazard. So I, I don't feel comfortable. I understand where you're coming from and I think it should be fine.
We are not going to be there to hurt people or to.
Sure.
In our forty-seven years, we never served bad food, nothing to hurt the public. And we are not going to allow it in the future. If something happens, I'm going to fix it.
Is your system, is your system serviced on a regular basis?
Yes, we find, we have no trouble with it. We pump it every year or every other year and everything's sound.
So.
We keep in, I mean, everything we do is up to date.
I still think, because this says it doesn't need all the rules and requirements, I still think we should have those who are responsible for that say, yeah, it's fine. They get it fixed, they do, you know, some sort of documentation.
It would be to protect you as well.
Yes.
It would be to protect you guys as well, it would be nice.
Okay, Bruce?
I just wanted to say, the Washtenaw County is only there to help. They're not there to try and shut it down, but they can make suggestions to hit some problems off the past, wherever, little things can actually be a big deal to help. So it doesn't hurt to get them engaged in there, even if you're not required to get them engaged, just because they can help save you some money down the road or a problem down the road by making suggestions. Their goal is to, just like every other, you don't have to meet today's standard, but you could do some things to improve and stop something from happening. So it is good business sense to get them involved, one way or another.
Right. When you look at stuff like this, you have to take legal. And as long as you've taken the steps necessary to try to rectify this hazard that they're, that they're identifying right there in language.
Potential hazard.
That, the potential hazard, okay, potential hazard. I know what legal people do when they read that language, okay? So you do stuff to protect yourself, right? You people, protect the township. And there should be something that answers that statement by STANTEC in there. That's all I'm saying. There has to be some, some action that we can take outside of. We don't make a decision on whether the system is okay, whether it has to be changed, any of that kind of stuff. We just need some expression that we've addressed it as far as we can address it.
I do want to say, I have the Washtenaw County Health Department, I've met the ladies, came out to my house, walked around my property, I know exactly what you're talking about. We don't want to hold you up. We think everything should be fine, but when the, when our engineering services say, it causes some heartburn. Linda?
I disagree with what, what you all have said tonight. You've got STANTEC who's never been to this site, who are not the people that decide how septic fields work anywhere in Washtenaw County. And I have personal experience. Washtenaw County has standards. When you make modifications of a certain percentage, you have to bring your system up to current standards. So when my house burned, even though I had a working septic that was probably eighty years old, I had to put in a brand-new septic field. It is very pricey. So what you are asking this individual to do tonight is to open a can of worms and potentially cost him twenty, thirty thousand dollars. If the county does not require, every septic field, if you go to Eagle's site, it says, and it's a statement, that every septic system in the state of Michigan will fail. And that it's on Eagle's site. That's, that's what's understood about septic. It's why when you build a house, you have to have a secondary field. Because the county recognizes at some point there could be an issue. To force these people to open that can of worms is wrong. If their renovation on their site doesn't require and doesn't trigger a review by Washtenaw County, leave it alone. You can say about every single house in this township that doesn't have a brand-new septic, that theirs could fail, theirs could fail. Man, Bart lives up over by me where we sit on a lot of quay, his could fail. And that's a true statement. It could fail, but it might not. And so I disagree.
Well, that's true. Except in this case, the issue was raised.
Just one second, we've got to be one person at a time. Linda, go ahead and say it.
I just think that when someone says it might fail, okay, the stock market might crash, it might not. That, that's, that's a crystal ball. That, that, that's, that's a crystal ball statement. You don't have a crystal ball, somebody's just throwing it out there. That unless Washtenaw County Department of Public Health or whatever their name is, says, I think it's Health and Environmental Services, says that this development, this redevelopment triggers their review, leave it alone. Thank you.
I'm gonna disagree with some of that, because I, I know what you're saying, and I'm trying to figure this out. And this is part of the public thing that we do. We talk about this out in public breaks of transparency. I'm wondering, because, I'm wondering about this STANTEC report. Have, have they been to your site?
No, and the county never asked me to, about, they said, I do not need anything to do with our system. Them, so they never requested anything. They never requested a checkup. I don't know where this came out, because we are, as you mentioned a few times over, we are under the grandfather clause.
Right.
And we are not changing any physical-
Right, I get that. And I also want to say I disagree with, um, I understand what you're saying about, I deal with Washtenaw County Environmental Health regularly, and I don't think getting them involved is, is, is always a good thing. I think we need to address this statement here one way or another. I would like to see, should, should we get back to STANTEC? I mean, is this really what they mean?
So, I can, I can explain. I mean, I had a conversation with the engineer about this.
Okay, because putting this in here, that's, that's ridiculous.
It is.
It's ridiculous, and I don't want it, I, but somebody else needs to take responsibility for that. And it's, it's either, if they're all up to date and fine, then Linda's right, we need to go another avenue. But I think that STANTEC needs to provide some clarification and not just say, you're planning commission, you decide if everything's safe. So go ahead and, and maybe you can help us out.
So the issue that they recognized is the area where the stormwater is pounding is not consistent with the, uh, Washtenaw County Water Resources standards for separation from a septic field. So they don't have a traditional, a true, uh, stormwater facility on the site, right? There's just an area where the water collects, and that is in close proximity to the septic field. And so if the septic field fails, if and when it fails, it will contaminate that groundwater.
Yes, but let me-
Just, just a minute, please.
So that, that is the statement that they're making. I am not an engineer, I'm not an environmental health scientist, so, you know, it, in one sense, it sounded like what you were saying is you wanted to get a sign-off from the Environmental Health Department, saying that they don't have jurisdiction to ask for new improvements here.
Maybe that's what, and you're right, that's what I said in the beginning, but the more we talk about this, what I, what I don't like is STANTEC saying, planning commission, you decide if this is safe or not. I think they need to provide some more clarification in what they're talking about, because they just threw this out there and made it look, it put this public hazard, and it's kind of like they went, here you go, and you, you decide. I, I think, I think maybe the wording on this is funny. I'm not gonna push anybody to make it fit what we want, but I think they should provide some clarification, so there's understanding that this is grandfathered, it's not necessary. Or maybe I'm, am I missing it? It says it's, but it says we need to decide if it's- Just one second. We need to decide if it's grandfathered. Are we supposed to decide if it's grandfathered? If, if the rule is there and it's not required, then we don't decide if it's grandfathered. They, it's already grandfathered, but that's not what this says.
No, it, it's not. It's saying the planning commission needs to decide that. But I, I think that what you're, I think what you said originally is you was like for the health department to say that it's grandfathered. So that could be as simple as what you're asking for. They could look at it and they could say-
I want to know what the rules are. And it sounds like we, these, we, we know what the rules are. We kind of do now, but what are the rules, I guess? That's what I'm looking for.
And that's, that's who, the, the ones who have jurisdiction over those rules are the ones who can answer that question. So if what you're asking is for the health department to say, they're not adding any more bath- bathrooms, that doesn't trigger, trigger improvements.
Maybe not. What I'm asking is, why is, why is STANTEC saying we should, do, do they know it's grandfathered? If it's grandfathered, just say in their report, it's grandfathered, then it's not required. Don't say the planning commission needs to determine if it's grandfathered, right after they said, oh, this could be a big public safety thing. I think it's, I think it's unclear.
It shouldn't be telling, talking about it failing. I mean, that's, that's projecting something that's not there. In other words, it's grandfathered, okay? And that's it, you know, I mean, putting failure in there, and, and it's a hazard, human hazard. Those are triggering words that can cause problems down the road. I think somehow that should be rectified. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying, Linda, that they should have to go and get a bunch of approvals and all that kind of stuff. I'm just saying, I want to protect them and I want to protect the township.
Yeah, I think it already is what it is. Bart, did you have a question?
I, I, I think they got a little overzealous in writing their report. I'm wondering if this is a new guy that was writing this. Probably what could have been better phrased, something along the lines of, there's, there's nothing, there's nothing in this plan that shows change for septic field or, you know, wastewater or anything, you know, redesign or, or additions or improvements, you know?
Okay.
Based on that, you vote.
I agree. Okay, so what, what do you guys say?
But if, if something were to change, then you should look at those. That may be the only thing they could ever put in there.
Okay.
If something were to change, then we, we, we would have to look at these other items. So that's putting it back to these guys. Just say, hey, by the way, if you were to add another bathroom, don't just think you're adding a plumbing for a toilet and just thinking, you'd have to consider other these, these other things.
But that would be on the site plan.
Yeah.
Right, so I, what do you guys think, if, just to kind of move this along, I, I think we're on the same page, is that this number 10 needs to be addressed and clarified-
I stand with it.
-by STANTEC. Um, they're doing, if you, if you live in Washtenaw County and you have a septic field, you deal with these people on a regular basis, they're all over you, you pay your permitting and all this kind of stuff. So everything should be fine, but I don't, I don't think this is, I don't think this is right. I don't think it's helpful, I don't think it's clear.
Paul, can STANTEC clear with us?
I don't, I don't. I work for STANTEC, and STANTEC doesn't work for me.
Right.
But you guys can certainly ask questions and make direction from here.
And so then, um, maybe this number 10 needs to be looked at. But if it is grandfathered in, according to whatever the rules are, I think we need to find out. If it's grandfathered in, it's grandfathered in. We shouldn't be spending 20 minutes talking about it.
You know, I had a store in Saline.
Oh, you know what, I'm sorry, we're not gonna, we're not gonna move on. Save that one for the public comment, okay? So we're gonna, we're gonna try and move on, but thank you. Um, okay, so is everybody good with that? We need to find clarification with the rules. If it's grandfathered, and if it is, then they're, they're good to go. But you also do need to address all the issues they're talking about, measurements and numbers and all that kind of stuff. So I'm sure if you're doing your to-do list, you should be fine. Okay. Sorry, I just tried to keep things moving. Every, I know we all have a story. But, um, is there, okay, so is there anything else in that STANTEC report that caught your eye? Concerns, questions that the applicant or Paul can answer?
Who, who is gonna, who does STANTEC put in some direction?
Paul.
So, I, I mean, I think what, I think what I would suggest, so we've, we've put some suggested conditions out there, and, and one was provide approval for the septic field. Um, but I think it would just be provide clarification on the status of the septic field. And, and that's something that the applicant would work, work on and provide information back. And if they need to talk to STANTEC about it-
Yeah, they probably have, and, you know, you have to do annual maintenance on a lot of these things, like, well, I think I have an engineer field, but whatever the requirements are, they probably have the documentation every single year or whatever's required, so they should be fine with that.
And one more point, if I could say, the roundabout, uh, when they're talking about the storm, the water, the drainage, they said they're gonna take care of it. It's gonna be-
Hooked together.
Hooked together. And they're, exactly. And they're gonna do what's-
Necessary.
Necessary for the roundabout bit.
Sure.
So it is not gonna, between us and them, there is no conflict.
Right.
So that statement itself, it shouldn't been on that report.
Well, I'm sure STANTEC doesn't have any idea. All right.
Because, uh, I've been trying now for three years. I paid over $50,000 and we're still on square one.
Yes.
And that's a shame. After 47 years, I should be treated better.
Okay. So we've been through the planning report, we've been through the engineering. We don't have any issues except for number 10 that needs some sort of a clarification. I guess we're done with that one, right? So now do we, um, hopefully Paul's been taking some really good notes over there. Where's mine? There it is. Okay. So we need a motion to either approve the preliminary site plan for EATAS Gas and Go, or to deny preliminary site plan, or-
You wanna hold me until you do this?
Or you can do it. Or to approve with conditions.
Yeah.
And so that's the one we're gonna use, right? Because we're gonna check on that number 10. Do we have anything else in there?
Uh, so, you know, there were a number of items in my report, as well as the engineer's report, that I think should be addressed on the final.
Yeah.
Right.
You talked about getting approval from the road commission.
Yeah.
Um, I know that the fire marshal in earlier iteration, excuse me, the fire chief in earlier iterations have mentioned the need to get, uh, the state approvals, that that's all final site plan issues. So, you know, maybe they know that, but it wouldn't hurt to, to reiterate that those, that those, uh, regulatory authorities do have to provide those approvals on the final.
Okay.
Um, you guys indicated that you wanted to show improvements to the facade on the final site plan. And then ultimately provide some clarification on the status of the septic field and the stormwater.
For, for the rules of what's required, yeah.
Now that's through the county health department.
I think, I think the applicant and their engineer can, can-
Right.
Provide information to answer that question.
Got it, okay. Um...
And if they need to work with the township engineer to figure out how to best solve that by all means.
Okay.
Any discussion on hours or business?
No different. Why would it change?
I don't know, did you ask?
Uh, your hours are di- are gonna change. Eight to nine.
No.
Sunday it's eight to six, or nine to six.
Same hours.
Same hours.
Any other questions?
Just wasn't having.
Okay.
I don't know which one she was. I don't know which one.
Okay, um... Paul, on this one, where we have all our options?
Yes.
I just had the facade improvements and clarification of number 10 in the STANTEC report regarding grandfather clause. Or, did you, do you, we're looking for a motion, what the motion is for Daryl to read. Do you have a good one?
Uh, if you're, if you're looking to approve it with, with conditions, I, I would suggest the third one. And, and those items that are below it, except for number four, that would be reworded to provide clarification on the status of the septic field and the stormwater.
Okay, I think, I'm trying to get that worked out positively. Okay, Daryl, do you want to read?
You got one of those.
Kind of. You just kind of make it up as you go a little bit.
Okay, I make, I make a motion to approve, uh, the preliminary site plan review on EATAS Gas and Go file number 17-003, with the exception of them to supply information on the facade improvements, uh, and the, uh, modification to the STANTEC report number 10.
We all have them.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so, yeah.
We gotta go through all of it?
So it's, it's, uh, here, right, with conditions, and then these are the conditions, you got six up on. And you guys get-
Okay, a motion to approve the site with, with conditions. All outstanding items of the township planners' report dated May 11th, 2021. All outstanding items with the township engineering report dated May 12th, 2021. Provide all required state approvals for fueling stations. Provide approval from Washtenaw County Road Commission. Uh, state the, or, and show the facade improvements, and a clarification on number 10 item from STANTEC's report on the septic and stormwater.
Grandfathering.
Pardon?
The grand. That's right, we're good.
With the grandfather-
We know what it means. Let it go.
We're good. Okay, so that was Daryl. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Okay, so-
Okay, this will be a roll call vote.
Roll call vote, Pam Merle?
Yes.
Danny McGarry?
Yes.
Cheyenne McLaughlin?
Yes.
Darrell Lewandowski?
Yes.
Rob Rizzo, now present, or kind, yes.
Bob's not coming. He can't come, he's, he's done at work.
Thank you, it is an example.
Oh, thank you. Okay, uh, 9B, accessory building ordinance discussion. What Paul did, um, with the accessory structures.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Um... Our, our current ordinance is, is not keeping with our community, our department's needs. And the, the issue we had, Bart, I don't think you were here, but the issue we had was with the accessory buildings, is that they were so limiting, and we had such a, we have such a wide variety of environments here. It just didn't make sense to have one ordinance. So what he did is put things into, he just gave an example of one, put things into a scale to at least give us a starting point and provide some guidance. I mean, we have things from the Hamlet all the way up to the 10-acre, 5-acre, 5-acre parcels, yeah.
I'm sorry, I have to dig for that copy. So the, the example that I've provided is, is, is very restrictive. 10 acres or less, you're only permitted one accessory building. 10 to 15 acres, you can have two accessory buildings. 15 to 20, you could have three. 20 to 25 is four, but, you know, we're, we're already saying that two accessory, uh, structures on two acres is too little. So in the report, I also provided various zoning districts that allow for residential, uh, single-family residence, to which an accessory structure would be an accessory. And so I listed those. You've got RC, the minimum acreage is 10. You've got agricultural residential where the minimum acreage is two. You've got the, um, estate residential where the minimum, uh, lot area is five. Then you've got low-density residential where the minimum acreage is one acre. You've got single-family residential, which is, uh, uh, 10,980 square feet to one acre, depending on whether they have public water or not, public sewer or not, excuse me. And then the Hamlet Center District, which is the same, 10,980 square feet to one acre, depending on whether you've got sewer and water or not. So that's, that's the range that Pam was talking about in terms of the different sizes. And based on your last conversation, you suggested that maybe some of the smaller lots, uh, probably could be more restrictive in terms of the number that you put on there, um, versus allowing for a greater number on larger lots. So just as a example, I put this table in here- So just as a example, I put this table in here as a starting spot for you to consider if this is in the right direction. So, uh, under one acre, maximum of two accessory structures, two, one to two acres, three accessory structures, two to five, four, five to ten, five, and then over ten, just based on lot coverage. So that, that's a, that's a starting point. If you guys, you know, wanna provide commentary or modifications.
Does, does what exists have any bearing? What exists in the township now?
I don't think we could ever really use that.
No, I'm not saying use it, I'm saying, does it have bearing? Does it have bearing? In other words, we're making all these rules, and yet what's going on in the township is diametrically opposed to our rules.
And that's why we're changing the rules.
So the rule right now is...
So the rules will be from now on?
The rule now is that you can have a maximum of two, and it's, you all are recognizing that that's two people.
And it's also recognized that everybody's got, like, five, six.
Yeah, I mean, I could, I could just take you for a tour and...
I know, it's, it's, it's kinda silly.
Show you what's going on and...
The reasons came about...
It's not even close.
Right, and, but we, we can't really look at that. We have to look at what we have. And it came up as an issue, as a problem, because somebody was, wanted to put a pole barn in and they couldn't. Because they live on three acres, three and a half acres, and it said there was two. Well, that just doesn't even make any sense. And then we got into Bart's favorite about the numbers, how do you pick the numbers on? I don't know, out of a hat, because we're the planning commission, right? And so it just...
I'm gonna get even more elementary.
Oh, okay. But what we're trying to do is, and it's like, we'll never be right, we'll always find some sort of fault somewhere. Somebody will always have, have something, but the, and we can't always just say, well, we can't have any rules out there, we have to have some guidelines, you know, for some of these, some of these things. Not, I mean, none of us are into making a gazillion rules for everybody. But we just wanna try and keep our community neat and respectful of our neighbors and things of that, that nature. So that's how this all got started.
So it's, these are kind of a backup in case there's a dispute? Because then you use these as guidelines for dispute? Because we don't have an ordinance officer to enforce any of this.
When people come to me with a building permit, I look at the zoning ordinance and see if it fits the regulations. So it's not for dispute, it's for, it's for issuing of zoning compliance.
So it's from here on out then, you're saying?
And today is just, it's just a discussion. I mean, I don't know, maybe we need to whole, throw the whole thing out. I don't, I don't, I don't know. Or...
You know, 'cause it, you, you just, you sit here in meetings after meetings and go over all these rules and regulations, and then you drive around the township and...
Right, but we do have a process.
There's nothing like that here.
Right, but going back, we've always said here for years that we do have a process, and the process is, don't tell your neighbor, don't tell your friends, if you have a complaint, you have to go to the township and you have to file a complaint. And then there is a process there, and it's Gary. And Gary, Gary has, has to deal with it.
But we've been dealing with it, you know, we've been dealing with, when there is a complaint, we deal with it.
Okay, well, let's deal with this one.
So existing structures that are out there, you know, if they're not conforming to the ordinance, they're considered legal non-conforming structures and they're allowed to ruin it.
Okay.
So...
And we all, I shouldn't say we all, a lot of people have a creed that is, you know, since there's no outside storage, people need places to put their stuff. So to say, now we have an ordinance says, okay, you can, you can, you've got a detached garage, and you've got a shed, no, you can't have a pole barn. Or something like that. Or you've got, you know, oh, sorry, you can't have a little pool house because of, oh, no, sorry, no gazebo for you, you know, so we just need to look at this and say...
What does this, what does this ordinance, existing or not? What does this ordinance do? What is its function? What is its purpose? Someone tell me what the purpose of this ordinance, no matter how many accessory buildings. What is the purpose?
That's what I was getting at.
Slow down, stop, allow, permit, what, what is, what does it do?
And, and that's, that's what we're, we're here to discuss, because it's kinda frustrating for us to pull numbers out of a hat. I mean, there's, there's...
No, I'm asking that question.
Well, the purpose is to have a, is to put stuff in. People wanna put their stuff away. If there's no outside storage, then they have to have, um, you know, they can't have their stuff just laying over the yard, which, I know they do.
What is the purpose of the ordinance?
Of the buildings?
Of the ordinance, of the document, of the paperwork that you follow and did. But I understand the pitch that he's in. He sees what's happening, he's like, yeah, it's already happening, but not much we can do about it. But someone is honest, comes in following the procedure, and he has to go by the written law, and it's like, you know...
Right, and so Bart, that's what we're here to discuss. If there is no purpose, we need to throw it out. However, is there a purpose, is maybe somebody wants to have, you know, a bunch of four or five little buildings in the hamlet all over the place? I don't know, do we want that?
If you're told to jump through hoops, you jump through the hoops, you conform, you try to be the good guy, then you drive around the township.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, guys, let's, let's, guys, guys, let's get back to what we're, what we're supposed to do, of let's, 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 we have to start somewhere. So let's start with what we, what we have, and nobody likes it, it doesn't fit.
I like the Paul bit, this, with this chart here. It's a start.
Trying.
Because I'm trying to figure out, well, jeez, I've, I had a gazebo, now I can't put a barn up to put stuff in, and I wanna tractor and stuff in the, in a barn. I can't because I, I fall in, in the old chart of one building for what I got. So I, you, I guess you count the gazebo as a building. It's not enclosed or anything. Screen door window, it's just open, a place to sit in, in rain or whatever. But then I can't, I looked at that and said, gee, now I can't put a extra garage up or something to put all the stuff that's in my garage in another one.
And maybe Paul can better provide the purpose of this ordinance, because he's the one that receives all the complaints, so...
And I, and I think that Bart's question is, is act, is, is, uh, spot on for what you, what you're doing with this. What is the governmental purpose? What is the, you know, serving the public health, safety, welfare? What is, what is the governmental purpose of regulating the number of structures? And I think that is a good question to start from. If it is a clutter, if it's a, you know, to protect a neighbor from somebody else who may put up a dozen small sheds or something in their yard, I think that...
And is that even a problem?
Is that a problem? So that's, I think, I can't answer that question. You, as the planning commission...
Right, but you can provide the issues from your experience, from the planning perspective, of some of the issues of the ordinance, so we can look at it and say, maybe it's not an issue, or maybe, maybe we don't need one of these things. So what are the concerns that you see, because you get them, we don't get them?
So I, I haven't had any particular complaints about the number of buildings. This is kind of a typical zoning ordinance regulation for accessory structures, so that somebody doesn't, you know, put dozens of small little structures in their backyard. It's more of a protection of, of, you know...
So have you ever seen anybody do that?
I, yes. I mean, there are, there are examples around the township of people who have lots of little structures and they're, they're...
But we don't have a lot of complaints though, do we, Paul?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, the complaints, what's the issues? What are the issues with?
Like I said, I haven't had any complaints about that.
Yeah, I think it's, it, it sounds like it's only coming from when someone wants to put something up and they're coming to him, and they have a doghouse in the gazebo, and they wanna buy a shed from Home Depot and put it up, that he has to tell them no. He doesn't necessarily want to, but he has to tell them no. You know?
Do you have to pay for the, for the permit to put it up?
A building permit is based on the cost of the structure, so I don't, I don't know.
Okay, so there, the...
There is a fee, yes.
Linda, I'd like to hear what you have to say.
So where this really comes from, and I'll give you a, a real example. Years ago, the township created Hamlet Center District zoning to be a mix of business and residential, many times within the same building. So I, along with a partner, bought the building the post office is in. I eventually sold my interest, I'm not interested in being a landlord. But the other business is basically an office. They don't have any construction firms that work for them, they simply do the sales. So if you wanted to remodel your home, new windows, new siding, new doors, they come out to your house, they do all the measurements, they determine what type of materials you have, and it's handed off to a subcontractor. They go to the home building show that they have in the suburban showcase, in a normal year, a couple times, where they have a very large display that showcases the different types of siding, windows, things like that. So back last year, they had the opportunity to buy a prefab building that somebody backed out of. So maybe it was a thirty by forty barn, the best of my recollection. But before they bought it and were out their money, they came to the township to say, can we put up a building now? We have the house. Post office in it, the building, the, this little company's in it, and upstairs, one of the family members actually lives. We have a detached garage on the site. Don't eat a septic, 'cause we're on sewer here in the hamlet. Not only are they told, no, they can't have this accessory building to primarily store this large display, and it's currently stored in a pole barn at Five Mile and Salem Road. And again, it's, it's a generational business, it's changing hands. We want the ability to take it out of dad's pole barn and put it into the businesses. Not only are we told no, but then we're told, well, the only reason why you guys can keep functioning, because you're in violation of the ordinance, is because there's been no complaint, and we were told that by your consultant that's seated at the table tonight. Because he determined that what that company really is, is a construction company. They're not. They're the sales arm of a conglomeration of people that work together to provide a service. So we have done what the township said and what they envisioned. I sat in this room when they created the Hamlet Center District, and I'm the only one in the room tonight that was here that night and for those months. And the idea was, much like you have in small towns all over America, is that you would have commercial, retail, professional offices on the ground floor and someone would live upstairs, kinda like they do over at the store. And that's exactly what we did. The supervisor of this township points to that renovation of that building as one of his great success stories. And he did, he was very supportive of that, very supportive of taking an older home and renovating it to the standard it is today. That business still needs that pole barn. They still need a place to store things. That's not where they're gonna have trucks in and out every day. But they've been told no by the consultant seated in their room tonight. And I believe he did it in what he believes in accordance with the ordinance. I, I don't think he's trying to work anybody over, but he's bound by the structures of that ordinance. And so that's what people are asking. We're saying, what you have, what, the way that your consultant has to interpret that ordinance, it's not feasible to allow businesses to continue. You guys have referenced why residential people. And again, this is a battle I don't personally have to fight, because when I need a new barn for hay, or I need a new barn for my cows, I don't have to come see the township, because Michigan Right to Farm allows me to put up an agricultural structure. But that's why you're having this discussion tonight. Because you are hampering the very things that you claim you wanna do. You want the ham, hamlet to become vibrant, to be this mixed use, and yet then when somebody has a business that they're trying to continue, they don't know.
Okay, thank you.
How, how many buildings on how many acres does All American Storage have? So, so we're, we're confusing, I think there's...
Accessory structure.
Yeah, I think we're confusing accessory structures with, with different businesses, so...
Let's define an accessory structure.
An accessory structure is a, is a structure that's supplemental to a residential, uh, primary use. So again, a farm would be the, would be the primary use, so that does not, so that, as, as Linda said, she wouldn't, those wouldn't be considered accessory structures, that would be part of the farm. With American Storage, that's a storage facility, those are part of the principal use. With a residential use, the accessory structure would be something that is supplemental and clearly accessory to the use of the site for a residence.
Then, then I'm just gonna say it goes right back to my original question of what's the purpose of it? Because if the purpose is not to look out your window and see fifty buildings, and it's okay for a business but not for a resident, I sit there and say, what's the purpose, you know, it comes back to that, so...
Businesses are...
So we're either expanding or getting rid of this thing. Is really what it comes down to, you guys, right? We're, we're expanding or eradicating this.
You think so?
You know what, we gotta be careful of not becoming homeowners.
This is exactly what my better half said to me, she says, you know, is, is Sam becoming a homeowners association? She said, not at all.
Yeah, but that's what we're doing.
So, okay, so, but we're, but we're, obviously, we're looking here at either massively expanding this thing or just...
Well, that's what we're trying to, that's why I thought, let's go back and see, we have ordinances to provide guidance, because there are issues, which I go back to, what are the issues? So...
So we don't, we don't allow for commercial uses or industrial uses to be right on, typically, we try not to have those right on top of residential uses, because, like you say, all those buildings wouldn't necessarily be compatible with what you wanna see out of your backyard. So...
Okay.
So that, that's the question. You, you were right, you're either eighty-sixing it, you're putting something in here that's reasonable, or doubling down on what you've already got.
And we know we don't like what we have.
The choice is not see here.
And...
That's fine, okay.
So now we're back to, I guess our only problem in limiting accessory structures is, how many structures are you gonna see out there? Is it a problem, and where are you gonna see them? Where are they gonna see them? Where am I gonna see them in, in my neighborhood? Where...
You know me, I love playing devil's advocate for anything like this.
Well, this is what we're looking for right now, you are in the spotlight.
Okay, I'm gonna quit my job. And I'm gonna be a shed builder. And I, I build sheds in my backyard, so I have a surplus of sheds in my backyard. What do you do for something like that? It's all the what is. You're allowed one building, and your neighbor wants to complain, and, and you wanna put up a second building, and they say no, or a third one, I guess, and you don't, so, okay, you knock down one, and you knock down another, and then you put up something that's the full thirty-five foot high to the roof peak that goes way up to thirty feet from your whatever, and you say, okay, you didn't like looking at that, now you can look at this. I mean, it's, you know, that's the way, okay, so I, I pass the, I have one, you know, accessory building, but now it's built to the max to cover the maximum amount of square footage of my lot, I mean, there's just...
So what's your proposal?
There's too many ways to just...
Right, so you get, you're, you're suggesting some different scenarios, but if you, if you think it should be eradicated, make that suggestion and everybody else can weigh in on it.
Unless, unless we hear something that really says, we think this is gonna go plum loco, swing pendulum the other way, which if there's already people with five buildings and we're not really seeing any complaints, I, I'm okay with getting rid of it. You know, it, 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 I, I mean, I don't know, I'm not the expert on this, but...
Well, that's what we're here to discuss, that's what we're here to discuss. And, yeah, we could go from one extreme to the other.
Does this cover across the street in the hamlet, in the backyard?
That was, that was the problem. We had one ordinance.
They live on acreage, they live on a lot.
How many buildings do you expect to see there? Or would you like to see there?
But, but, but then I'm just gonna sit there and say, how do you determine that three is, three doghouses is worse than three twenty-foot diameter gazebos? It's the three.
But that, that doesn't apply, does that? Okay, let's, let's stick, let's stick to what applies, though.
I speak on how to measure, right? You heard me say, number and units.
And I said that a long time ago.
Give me a number and give me a units to do it.
That's what I said, we were right back to the numbers, and that's what started this whole thing. And what started, and also, but the problem was, we had one ordinance for the hamlet that applied to where you live, that were applied to where they live, you know, it, it just, it just didn't make sense. So we asked Paul, let's talk about this a little bit more, because the more we talk about it, and the more we hear from people who are out there, um, all five of you, the more ideas we hear about, because we don't know it all. That's what this community is about, contribute, contribute or be quiet.
I keep seeing this picture of people making decisions for thousands.
So, so we still haven't really decided if there's an issue or there's a problem. So let's move on to the next what we have and see if we can pick this apart quickly and do something, um, maybe. I just, so what he did is put like a sliding scale, like under an acre, one to two, two to five, five to ten, over ten acres. And he just threw some numbers in there. Now, obviously, it gets right back to what we started at the very beginning. How does the planning commission pick their numbers? Well, it's out of a hat, as far as I'm concerned, um, which doesn't seem right to me. Or there's another way of going about it is with square... Or there's another way of going about it is with square lot size, you know, coverage, certain percentage of your.
Like the house.
Is it, is it of the house or is it of your whole property?
So, like, for example, in the agricultural residential district, the maximum lot coverage is ten percent. So your, your home and.
Currently, it is ten percent.
It's ten percent. So your home, your garage, your pole barn could not take up more than ten percent of, of the total lot area. And just for reference.
So, that just brings up something different. Because now we're talking about lot coverage and we're talking about being in the agricultural community. We want to see, like, wooden spaces.
I'm in the woods, I don't see anything.
Does that apply? I'm thinking not.
Ten, ten percent of two acres is eight thousand seven hundred and twelve square feet.
Eight thousand seven hundred what?
And twelve square feet.
No.
So if you.
I don't like this one.
No.
That's a lot of building footprint. I mean, if you think about, you know, two thousand square foot house, the footprint of a two thousand square foot house, if it's two stories, it's gonna be a thousand square.
Depends if it's a ranch or if it's a.
Around sixty by eighty pole barn gets you halfway there. Sixty by eighty is enough.
It's huge. Is there really a purpose to this, is there? Bruce.
What?
What'd you see the purpose of this ordinance?
Well, obviously, you're trying to open up and, and reduce restrictions. So anything you do in that direction is favorable. There's also the ZVA.
I guess what's the purpose of the restrictions? In your eyes?
I guess without any control, you have no means, if someone does, if Bart comes to, you know, wants to do that, you have no means of telling him no when he wants to do something really chill. So you, you should put some, you know, there's always gotta be some sort of yin and yang or some sort of guidance. And then you go to the ZVA when it's outside the guidance for, but it should be realistic to the area we live in. And, you know, two is certainly not enough for someone that's got a couple of acres or whatever. Three is not enough, especially when you start talking gazebo's and sheds and, and pool houses and things like that.
Detached garage, pole barn.
Yeah, so, and then when we, then we start throwing in, we want to re-clean up their place and put everything inside. Now, you, you even can, you know, compound it even more where an extra building would be helpful so that your neighbors don't have to look at anything. So it's all about, again, when you're looking at, keep in mind you're going to the building department, ask for a building. Up to the building department to say, make that a nice looking building, don't make it, you know, a, a, a thing that's gonna about ready to fall over because it's, uh, gotta be past our building inspector. So I don't see a problem with it, expanding it. It's just, where is the happy medium that doesn't cause more people to go to the ZVA or more people to walk out frustrated because someone got told no or they had to go to the ZVA?
So maybe it's not numbers, maybe what is, you know, if there is, I understood that kind of puts some clarity around it. So nothing super crazy happens, right? So we take it rid of, so, so would make sense then to put like, you know, the percentage, I don't know, percentages on there? Is that dumb too?
I mean, the percentage is already there. It's a standard in all ordinances, every zoning district has a, has.
Oh, so it's just the numbers we're looking at, the percentage is already there.
Really the number of an undefined.
I mean, I, I think Bruce's point is, is appropriate, that, you know, unfortunately, the rules often become created to play to, you know, the lowest common denominator to somebody who, who might do something crazy if not for the rules. Most of us are gonna, most of us are gonna do something that's reasonable.
Right, so then it shouldn't be real tight or restrictive, just something to keep out the craziest.
There's the letter of the law and there's the spirit of the law. And you try to find something there, you know, if it's possible that the spirit of the law is the predominant factor. But when there's a dispute, you have to go to the letter of the law, okay?
No, with, with the zoning, with administering a zoning ordinance, you go with the letter of the law. You, you wanna try to make.
Well, then, then you don't want to put all these restrictions in. You don't want to do it then, because then you're gonna have to tell everybody they have to adhere to these restrictions, even when it's not practical.
Bart, what were you gonna say?
I mean, at, at most, if we're talking, once again, we haven't heard a, a definition of purpose. Just, I'll state that. Maybe if anything, the township would get involved with is the, I don't know, if-then's of, if you want to put up a new structure, maybe just consideration of what existing structures are. I mean, is it, are you replacing one? Should we, does one require repair? I don't know, if we're, if we're concerned about what it looks like, but I, I don't see any, I don't see any purpose in this.
In the numbers, you're not seeing a purpose in the numbers.
We've got a bunch of, we've got a bunch of people with five or six.
I don't think people want to spend any more money on buildings than they have to.
Yeah, and they may only have, you know, so much to spend at a time, they can't.
I'm gonna put up tents in my backyard, maybe you can't yell it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, it's just, I, I don't know.
I'm not, yeah. Okay.
If all you can put up is this at this time and something else at another time, then. God, let's just pursue the happiness, guys.
Pam, one of the ways that, that you control what you're doing is by the other requirements that you have. You have to have buildings so far from a setback.
Yeah.
If a building is of a certain size, it requires a certain type of planning to screen it. And you have those types, or at least in the past, you had those types of regulations for cell towers for many things. And that's a way that you can control buildings. Buildings have to be so far apart. And that's, again, if one catches fire, you don't want to row where they all catch fire. So the way that you control it is not by coming up with just that arbitrary number, because you already have lot coverage. You could say, you could pick some number, you can't exceed that. You don't ever want to see on property more than whatever that number is. But again, the other way to control it is to require all of those other requirements that you can put in. You know, it has to be, you, you have to have accessibility to the building by means of a, of a driveway that has egress and ingress from a, a public road. Again, that way, if there is a emergency, you can get a vehicle in. But those are, and I, I, little again surprised that nobody, again, Paul didn't suggest it because he deals with that, where many times, the way that you deal with it, it's not direct, but it's, it's kind of from a side. And I think you guys could come up with regulations that would help can do the control you want without having to.
Put numbers on it?
Well, I think you, I, I, I think you do want a not exceed number, both for numbers of buildings and I also think you want not exceed lot coverage because I think there are people that will push the envelope. But I think that you can make the, and I go back, earl- early in the township zoning when they created the USD and they wanted to have a very high-end building. One of the ways that they were going to do that was their ordinance talked about what the facades had to look like from all sides, where the parking could go. And so I think if you use that same type of creativity that had been used for other areas, I really think, and, and I'm sure Paul can do it because I'm sure he's familiar with how those are used in, in other types of ordinances. He could bring something back to you guys that would really, I think, help define it by something other than just a number.
That's interesting.
Locate, location is a factor. When I built my pole barn, I had to be thirty foot away from all the lot lines.
Yeah.
You know, so that restricted to where I could put the pole, you know.
Bruce, one more.
I'm gonna echo what Paul finding and when he said it, it's more about, you know, I'm more concerned about what it looks like than that you got three buildings. I want to know that what you, you didn't put up three tents or three storage.
Oh, but they're good.
Storage trailers, you know, on your property or something like, you know, so I, I'm more concerned about, like everybody's been saying, more where it's located and all those dimensions. I, I don't think restricting the number of buildings, except for maybe some crazy number, is as important as looking at what you're building, not so much how many you're building. The building needs, you know, can look, look nice or safe.
Okay, and I'm, and I'm gonna say, if we start getting into subjective things of looks nice, this is the way it came from Home Depot, we're going down a rabbit.
That's not what he meant.
Okay.
No.
All right, just, I'm, I'm.
No, I, I agree.
Can't write in the way of that one.
I mean, I have over ten acres and I, we had to go before the ZVA to find a place for us to put a pole barn with over ten acres, but I have protected wetland, I have a gas line running through the property. It was hard to find a spot. So, I mean, there, there are lots of regulations in here. Yeah. That would probably restrict how many you could have on your lot. So do you guys like?
We're trying to find a solution to a problem that doesn't exist.
Well, the problem is that we've got. Problem is our current ordinance. It's really restrictive.
Okay, well, then we're trying to make it more restrictive.
No, 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 we're trying to make it least restrictive, just to keep out the one percenters.
You could move to a, you could move to a situation where, you know, you're basically using the lot coverage, which, which is already.
Are you there?
It's an already an applicable standard. You could place a far outnumbered that you think would be reasonable not to exceed. Maybe that's five, maybe that's ten for a, for an outlier. And, and that addresses the situation that would, which brought this up as, as an issue to deal with. Because currently it says two, it's been determined that two is too restrictive. There are, as, as has just been discussed, other provisions that regulate the location, the, you know, kind of ability to place a building on a site. So if you feel like that is acceptable, you know, you could leave it with that, but maybe just place, place a single number on there. The only reason we did the sliding scale was based on the last discussion. There was some commentary that leaving it open-ended wouldn't be appropriate for some of the smaller lots, some of the smaller neighborhoods. Bart, the, the, the purpose that you keep asking for is, it's, it's really a clutter thing. I mean, that's, and that's what I've stated to you.
Well, then, so, then once again, attack it where it exists. If it's a clutter thing and it's a sightline thing and I don't want to see it from the neighbor, then maybe, and I'm not necessarily suggesting this, I'm just giving examples of, please, God, don't come back after me. Maybe it becomes, from your property line going towards the interior, anything further than a hundred feet away, you can have as many as you want. So there you go. I mean, that's, you're the only one really looking at it, your neighbor's gonna be more than a hundred feet away from it, you know. You know, so, so anytime, you know, and maybe it becomes something like that, anything within.
But we're still getting, we're still back to not to exceed crazy number, right? Well, it depends on where you live is, is what determines a crazy number. I mean, if we put, I have like almost three and a half acres, so maybe four or five or is not, is not crazy, but four or five over across the street would be crazy. But then we gotta be practical too, I mean, we're getting too caught up in all these rules. And, um, I don't think people are gonna put a bunch, I don't know, do they put a bunch? People are gonna spend money to put a bunch of, a bunch of buildings out there and we make out stuff? That's a good question. What do you guys think?
Us?
Yeah.
Well, we do have quite a few structures on our acreage, but we have quite a bit of acreage. And all of our structures are very well-maintained, match the facade of our home, et cetera. But I've been trying to come up with something too because I'm thinking if the structure is a certain size, and, and go ahead and say the size, doghouse size, put up as many as you want. But Chuck and I, we had to get a permit on our pole barn. I'm hoping that if it's a certain size, they have to get a permit that would then fall under these other guidelines.
Yeah.
I was thinking maybe forget the number, but target more the size. That's what I was thinking. And still, again, there's the setbacks, all that's in place.
Yeah, that's all in there, and I like the lot coverage. What, I don't know, maybe we need to think about this more, I don't know. I would like to just be done with it one way or another. This is what happens when you get into, the more rules you have, the harder it gets.
Tell me what the purpose is and I'll be more help.
Okay, so we're gonna, we, we don't want to, we want to keep, all right, we've got the, we've got the lot size coverage, we've got all these other things, right? So we already have them, like what Linda said. And so, so not to exceed a certain amount, number. We're just to minimize your crazy collection of dog houses or whatever it may be.
Why do you need to minimize my crazy collection of dog houses?
Because you live in a hamlet and people are, are complaining.
There are.
I don't know.
Really?
I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, exactly.
Bart, you already have something for dogs because you have a kennel component to your ordinance where if you have more than so many dogs, you have to be a commercial kennel. So you check your dog houses, make them do something.
Right, sheds from Costco are on sale and I'm going out to get twelve of them.
Knock yourself out, live free or die, welcome to America, what's left of it. Do what you want, pursue happiness. Go through all the amendments, knock yourself out, please. I'll make it very, very clear.
Right, okay, so Bart, what about that?
Twenty-two years, twenty-two years ago I moved to this township. Because of the way this township was.
What about the people that are trying to sell their homes and they've got, they live next door to crazy Pam who just bought twelve sheds? Shipping containers.
There's already.
Wait, isn't that, wasn't that in our last one?
We, you know, there, there's language in there to deal with shipping.
Yeah, we, we think we dealt with that. But it's considered an accessory structure and if you, if we had zero, then someone could have twelve shipping containers.
As long as they met those standards that we put in place.
Everything else they could have those.
They would have twelve shipping containers.
We actually did have that. And then there is. Complaint, there has been complaints. About three of them, right? From the last year, I mean, calendar year. Over on Curry, some lady was cleaning out something from Westland or whatever and she wanted, she got booted out of there, so she brought all her stuff over here. People were complaining, it's, it looked like a junkyard, it looked terrible. Just tell me why. Freedom doesn't matter to a person next door, I mean, that's the problem is. If, if your neighbors not gonna.
Then, then what needs to be created is something that talks about what is seen. Not necessarily go after buildings this day, then go after unmowed grass that day, then go after a, a, a roof that's collapsing the next day, then a dead tree that hasn't been cut down the next day. You're not attacking it at, at, at the front. You're not addressing the issue. If your issue is what you see of the neighbors and I don't like it, it's bringing down my home, home value, then write something to that language. Let's quit dancing around the subject and attack it, go straight at it.
What's the answer, Bart?
I don't know, but I don't want it. I've got a neighbor that's got a whole bunch of stuff parked right up against the fence line. Hope, old dryers, lawn mowers, farm equipment, it's never, pipes, whatever. You know what? Oh, well, it's his property, it's there, I, I'm, I'm just moving on, doesn't matter. Live, live free or die, you know, I mean.
You can always put privacy fence up and you don't have to.
Yeah, I could, and that would be my choice.
You can have outdoor storage, so that should have to be gone, right?
But I'm not about to, I, I don't.
You guys still let us to live next to that guy.
People are just trying to get by, people are trying to just live and do what they can.
We've been talking about this for a long time.
Let's, 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 oh gosh, no, I won't say it.
Okay, so if we don't want to exceed the percentage of the lot, and we've got these numbers here, what if we just inflated to the numbers that would just make it to where it's like not crazy? Like under one acre. There's two, what if we put it, what if we put the four or five, I don't know. What if we, I, I mean, that way it couldn't be, it could. What if we, I, I mean, that way it couldn't be, it could be like ten, which is what we're talking about. And then what if one to two acres instead of three, what if we made it six? You know, or something like that. Or that? Or it's either that or, or no numbers, and. Is there anybody here who thinks we should not have any, a maximum amount and a number of accessory buildings we should have in your yard?
Now that I see the percentage, I might, why do you have to stick it up with the acre or two acres? With what your house size is, the footprint of the house, this is how much you got left, this is how many building you can have. And like if the house is eight percent and you're allowing ten percent, well, now you've got two percent size that you can put a shed on.
And that's of your property, so it's ten percent of the, of the property. So, your property is never covered more than ten percent.
The larger your property, the more space you can put.
Is ten, okay, so is ten percent a reasonable number?
That's already in there, we're not even discussing that.
I, I have no problem changing, you know, I believe it like it is, ten percent, and that's how the building's gotta be.
So, that makes sense? What's the problem with it?
So, then you give rid of the maximum?
None, okay, we got one none. We got none.
You know, I mean, we're not necessarily suffering on this extreme, other than Paul, enforcing the ordinance. Right, other than Paul sitting going, I'm sorry, I gotta do my job, this is what the ordinance says. You know, I mean, that, that's, that's really what we're addressing here, you know? If, if we swing the other way and it goes crazy, we can always make a change again, but I, I don't see, nobody's still being punished.
Well, that's fine, we've already spent a significant amount of time, and let's just see if we can try and get something right, and some, sometimes something ridiculous like this. We just wanna make sure we think of everything, because somebody's gonna walk through that door and say, aha, I live here, why are you, why didn't, how could you even think, why didn't you even think of this? It's like, well dude, because you weren't here, we talked about it for an hour. You know, there's all, there's always something, what I'm trying to do is bring out all the situations, I think we brought them up. Nobody has any other, any other issues, it sounds like lack coverage and just, just the other, somebody likes the numbers.
Okay, what I'm hearing is that we're gonna get rid of the numbers, I'll bring you back a draft with.
And we're done?
Yeah.
Yep.
Good, okay, what's next on the agenda? This makes me, okay.
We gotta go back to number four at some point, don't we?
Yeah.
Was that number ten? So, we gotta go back to number four?
Uh, that was number nine.
That was number nine.
Well, it was supposed to be, that's okay. Reports of commissioners and correspondents, board of trustees.
We passed, we, or voted to pass the home occupations changes and the exterior lighting changes.
Gonna have to get you guys some cleaned up ordinances.
ZVA?
Nothing at this time.
Land preservation and conservation, do you have anything to contribute?
Nothing new, nothing small like.
What's that?
Meaning tomorrow night.
As always, okay. Planning consultant review?
It's been a pretty slow month as far as building permits have gone.
Price of lumber, that's right, that's right. Okay, so now we're to number eleven, which is, which is the election of officers, but since we don't have everyone here, can we?
Close vote until next meeting.
That was just for tonight, who, for, who's gonna be secretary for tonight?
Yeah.
That was, that wasn't for a permanent position, it was just for the secretary for tonight.
Oh, well, that was Bart's.
No, it was.
So, you went and just went, total dictatorship, no vote, whatever, and just voluntold me? Oh, my good golly, what is the world coming to?
What, I thought it was, it was just for tonight, right? Election of officer for secretary, it was just for tonight.
I'm sorry, that was on me, I misunderstood.
I think that's why he got busy.
Alright, we're not, we're not doing anything with that, right? You have to have another board member to elect a secretary, but last meeting, you guys said that you needed to have an election to make somebody the secretary to do roll call, but then.
But what I'm saying is we're gonna cancel, we need to take this off because Bob is not here.
Or, or your new planning member's not here either.
You don't have to have a new planning member to elect someone.
That's right, oh, well, and, we what?
You don't have to have that new planning member to, to elect somebody, you, you should elect.
That's the guy I want to be secretary, I do. Yeah, how do we, how do we postpone that to?
Postpone it to the next one.
Okay, number eleven, election of secretary, um, postponed until June.
You make that motion and second it and voice vote on it.
Okay. June twenty-first, actually.
I made the motion to, uh, postpone the election of the secretary's chair to, uh.
Temporary.
Uh, Ju- June twenty-first.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are we gonna have a discussion now, or can we just go right to the voice vote?
No. Okay.
Voice vote, Pam?
Okay, no.
No, all the, really? Oh, okay.
Voice, well, I thought you'd just say aye.
Voice vote is all.
Okay, all those in favor of the election of the temporary secretary postponed until June twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of April nineteen, two thousand twenty-one as submitted.
Second motion.
All those, nope, aye. This'll, this'll be a voice too. All those in favor of approving the minutes of April nineteen, two thousand twenty-one as submitted, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That's our approved. Uh, public comment. Linda?
I wanna go back to what Stan Tech wrote. Dan Tech has no business speculating. They oughta, as Bart and Dan said, they oughta provide you with facts. They have a septic system, it's close to where you have groundwater, that's a fact. That it's gonna fail, they don't know that. And the only other fact that they might say to you is that possibly you should check with Washington County to see if this, the changes to this site require any changes. But you guys should, consultants work for you, you don't work for them. You don't ask consultants, you tell consultants how to do their job, you don't tell them the conclusion to come to, but you tell them how to do their job. You say to a consultant, we don't want speculation anymore, we're not gonna accept a report that has speculation in it. Deal with facts, deal with correct issues. If there's something that needs, to your point Pam, why would you approve it? If there's a septic issue, then identify the correct authority. Don't dump it on us, but that, and that shouldn't go through Paul in all due respect. Paul is a peer to Stan Tech, he's not their boss, and you are.
Okay. Chairperson comment? I actually do have a comment.
Any other public?
Oh, I'm sorry, any other public? Thank you. Okay, sorry, oh, sure.
Separate issue.
Okay.
At the right time. Um, Chuck Phillips along with my wife Candy Phillips. We were here last month on a lighting issue. Three of the, two of the people are here who were here last month, three, excuse me. I'm here just to follow up, to see if there's been any thought, any, any action that could be suggested that I take at this point. I don't know what to do. And, uh, we can't live next to stadium lights as we do right now, I mean.
I'm sorry, could someone catch me up?
I live next door to a neighbor who has installed what can only be described as stadium lighting, something that you would see at a football stadium, Michigan Stadium, with an intensity that's even greater, 'cause it's LED. These are the lights, these are how they are facing my property, like this. Like this, or any other restriction, like this. Our house is lit up in the middle of the night, three AM, four AM, five AM. It pierces our windows, we can't sleep at night when they're on. It's destroyed our peace of living in Salem Township completely. Last month I brought in pictures. One of the commissioners who is not present, Mr. Rizzo, had the courtesy of coming out and seeing the lights firsthand. And I don't know if any of you have spoken to him, but he can describe how intrusive and how out of ordinance, shall we say, that they are, they're, they're, that's beyond, beyond.
And when we were here last month, uh, April nineteenth, Paul had come up, came over to me and my husband and said, it has been a long night, I will talk to you soon. And I'm just asking you directly, when is soon?
I'm sorry, I didn't follow up.
Because, you know, wow, I couldn't even believe, I had to look with my glasses with the month that has flown by, it has been a fast month where I'm going through a lot with masks on, mask off, et cetera, but nothing's changing over at our property, nothing's changing. TJ, you talked really quickly and said something about a lighting ordinance, and I was like, what was that? So.
Yeah, what we.
That, that wasn't anything to do with us, right?
Well, the changes that we made are, Paul, you can help more, I mean, they're, uh.
They were the.
We can't, we can't make people.
Retroactive.
Retroactive to those only if they make something new, so it's only something that would be in our zoning ordinance before those changes were made, if there's anything in there, then those can be enforced, but not the new ones, is that correct?
So, we, I like coming to the meetings very much. And I'm listening for chairperson seats available, it's been a very much of a pleasure for me, and like hearing and learning more about Salem. But at the same time, if this is not our platform, then we just need to be told.
I think the way, um, from what I understand, Paul, is there, was there anything else that you needed to look into? For these people, was there anything to be addressed?
In terms of, uh, the ability for the, for us to regulate with neighbors and families?
Yeah.
So, no, I mean, I, I know what the situation is, and I'm sorry, I didn't follow up.
Because I'm gonna particularly take on Salem Township, all due respect, of how it was unpermitted and how it became permitted. That will be my personal, Chuck doesn't even know, I feel this strongly about it. How he had installed those lights without permit, and then they got permitted, who was it? Was it Stan Tech? Who was it? Because then they didn't do their due diligence, they didn't say, does this gonna affect your neighbor anyway, or regardless if you have a lawn? You know, what, what guidance is it supposed to, you know all this, but you guys don't, so, and again.
We're not in enforcement.
Right.
Well, the ordinance is clear, I wish I had it in front of me, it states very clearly, you know, about the intrusiveness of the lights and what they can do and what they cannot do. They cannot pierce, they cannot come onto your property in an excessive manner. Everything that the ordinance is supposed to protect us from is happening, while we're getting no protection. So, that's why we're here, what do we do? I don't, no, I.
They're tired.
I think, I think that the, the next step, from what I understand, would it have to go to legal action, is that correct?
I, I believe so, but I don't wanna, I, I think I'll, I can have a conversation with you tomorrow, I put a reminder in my phone to call you tomorrow, and I'm sorry I didn't do it.
When you can. We're patient people, it's been going on for almost two years, they were installed in the fall of nineteen. Okay, so we are patient people and we are reasonable people, but I don't think any of you
I mean.
can understand what we're talking about until you stand in those lights.
What's the address?
His address or mine?
I'm, I'm sure if I, if I'm at yours, I'll figure out.
Mine is, well, the property ninety-six fourteen Brookville Road, I have two addresses. My primary is six five eight seven.
What annoy the house that's.
But you can't see it, and, and it's just a funny thing that since this meeting last, last month, his lights had, not been on as much, which I don't know what that means, but, uh, but again, thankfully, Mr. Rizzo was kind enough to come by and spend some time, and I would invite all of you to, I don't know about Rizzo, I haven't met him.
He's a good guy.
He's not gonna say anything on my behalf, that he, that for any reason whatsoever, he's going to speak what he saw.
Right.
And what his experience was under the lights. Again, I can't, you have to see it, um, but if you're standing in the fifty-yard line of any of your local high schools, and it was nighttime, and those lights are glaring on, that's what I get. No difference, absolutely no difference. I, as I mentioned last month.
Is there any reason for doing this? Have you been expressed any reason?
That, that would be speculative, and I'd rather not go down that path.
Very good answer, yes, yeah.
I have my.
Ask questions up there.
Let's just say it's been a long, uh, lawsuit situation, I've already been with.
Okay, oh, okay, well then it's that far, I, I was trying to think of.
He went through all this.
Neighbors talking to one another and working things out, you know?
No, no, unfortunately not.
Well, I'm sure.
So.
Paul will get back to you and, and discuss what is up there. We, uh, most of us have heard, we heard it, um.
Hearing it and seeing it, it's two different things, you have to see it.
I've been by there, I've been, I've been by.
You haven't been in my backyard.
No, I have that, no, I have. But I'm not an enforcement person. I'm not an, I can't, I'm not an enforcement.
But it was why it's an interesting conversation for us to sit through one hour of, of the buildings.
Right.
Because like who, who the heck cares how many buildings, if nothing's gonna get enforced, and that makes me nervous.
Yeah, well, the, we're, we're, we're township.
Yeah.
Okay, we're small.
Yeah, and that's why we're here.
And, and, you know, we're not sophisticated like a big city.
No, and that's why my husband and I are living here as well.
We don't have an ordinance enforcement officer, okay, we don't have that. So, this, this will be sent up through the channels, through our planner. He will assess everything, and then he will send it up through the channels, and that's all we can do.
It's, it's, it's been done, this has been going on a long time.
Okay, that's all we.
And so that is, Dan, I'll just tell you, 'cause that's, that's why we did the lighting ordinance, is because there were problems with it, just like we're doing accessory, I know that wasn't in the interest of you, but, you know? So, well, it could be, there's, there's always something, so, we are not the enforcement agency.
Who is? The enforcement agency?
Gary is.
Gary?
Gary. Gary.
Excuse me.
Right. So, we know what the ordinance is, and, and we try to, and, and we hear stories, and, and sometime, it's just, it's not that we don't care, it's just that, you know, there's just not much that we can do here.
I understand.
As, as far as our role, and we, but we can certainly sympathize, because we have heard a lot of disturbing, unfortunate things, so.
Thank you.
Well, we, we understand, and the, the ordinances are on the books, it's not as though I'm trying to.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know, I'm not in a position or a role to say what you do with ordinances for your situation that predated the one that would fix your problem. You know, I just, I just don't have that, that knowledge, so.
Okay, well, we're trying to avoid more litigation, we've been to court enough, um, four years plus, with the cost that could have covered my, my kid's college education, but that's water under the bridge, and I'm trying to move on. So, we, we just hope that we can get some sort of action before we have to, regrettably, I say that very sternly, regrettably have to take action on our own, it's a lesson we wanna do. But again, I just wish everybody could see what I have delivered in Salem Township, that no other property is, and I wanted to be clear to you. That no other property is, and I wanted to be clear to you, and to you who wasn't here last month, gentlemen, I've, I've gone from corner to corner, street to street, up and down every street. There is not anything close to what I'm living next door to, with these stadium lighting, lights, LED. I don't know what the, I don't know how to calculate the, the intensity, except to say, I had to walk like this, and I'm walking in my backyard, literally. So Mr. Rizzo will testify to that, consulting his own eyes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any other fellow comment? Chairperson comment? I think, I think what, this meeting didn't go a- as I had planned. But I, I think we got, we got through some things, and I think we're kinda turning the corner on a couple items. One, with the, with these numbers, you know, when numbers come up for what we are determining is, is acceptable, you know, we're coming, we're, we're finding these things and, and trying to correct them. I think it's important to realize that we shouldn't be just pulling numbers out of cats or anything like that. There should be some justification, and I also think there needs to be a sense of reality in, in what we're doing. I mean, you know, you, when Bart plays devil's advocate, that's good. But I think financially, you know, where's the reality of, is somebody gonna put, you know, twelve Home Depot accessory buildings, probably not somebody's gonna spend that kind of money. So, we gotta look at these as, as guides, and not just get caught up in making the rules, trying to make everything perfect, 'cause not everything is gonna be perfect. And every time, the more rules we create, it seems like the more we can help everybody, except for the one or two non-compliant individuals, so. And also, I thought it was important that when we discussed more the Stan Tech report, I think it's important that we scrutinize some of these things, whether it's Stan Tech, whether it's Paul, just not to leave anybody out. But, you know, like Dan said, you know, he's put this in there, this, this sentence in here. Well, then that just threw everything into a tizzy, you know, and, and they put it on us, and that. You know, I'm sure, I don't think they meant to do it, but it, it could've put them in a, in a, in a tizzy too, because going out to these other government agencies, I'm sorry, it is not always beneficial for people, I've, I've dealt with, with a few of them, and so. I, I'm, it, it took us a little bit to get through that, but I, I think this report needed a critical eye in, in to not just take it for granted, as, as it is, and that's what we're supposed to do. Adjournment, nine forty-three, thank you.
Anne, I'm gonna put this back in the rocks. Just right there?
Yeah.
Okay.